March 7th, 2017. And it's 5:00 PM. And I call to order the regular meeting and special closed session meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
We have a declaration of closed session items by our city attorney, please.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have eight items listed this evening, two on the regular agenda for the City Council. They are both anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2 and pursuant to government code 54956.9E3. The facts and circumstances relating to that litigation are set forth on the agenda. The other six items are all somewhat related. They are on the special closed session agenda. A and B are on behalf of the City Council. Items D, E, F, and G are on behalf of the Airport Authority. They are all pending litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. They involve the litigation between COMAV, the Airport Authority, and the City of Victorville. The specific case numbers and case names are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there's reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the six o'clock meeting.
We will not recess to our closed session, and a regular session can begin at 6:00 PM.
Mayor Garcia should ask for public comment first.
Public comments? Do we have, is there anyone that would like to come up and speak?
I have a comment. Did we have an addendum to closed sessions? Because now I see D, E, F, and G. That wasn't given to me prior to tonight.
There was a, there was a closed session subsequent special meeting agenda that had the, those six items on it that you should have received.
Yeah, it's right here in front of me. I was just expecting it, probably to see it beforehand. Is that regular procedure to just?
It was sent out beforehand when we sent out the special meeting notice yesterday. You should have received it then.
Yeah, so in my 72-hour or 96-hour notice, I got the agenda which has...
Special meeting notice only requires 24 hours' notice, so you would have received it 24 hours ahead of time.
So then, okay, can you explain that? Because I'm not familiar with that.
Anytime there's a special meeting, you can call a special meeting on 24 hours' notice. And so the notices would have gone out prior to the 24-hour timeframe.
Okay, so that special meeting includes items D, E, F, and G?
They're on a separate agenda for the special meeting. A, B, D, E, F, and G.
I'll need later clarification on that later. Thank you.
I'll read the statement. Because we have an audience here. This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per government code section 54954.3. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak, all communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. I don't see anyone that wants to address the council, therefore, we will recess to our closed session. It is 6:02, and today is March 7th, 2017. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as housing assets successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had eight items on the agenda this evening. Items A and B on the regular agenda were anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to those cases are set forth on the agenda. Items on the special closed session agenda are A, B, D, E, F, and G. They are all existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. That is the litigation between COMAV, the Airport Authority, and the city. The specific case numbers and case names are all set forth on the agenda. At this time, we did not conclude closed session. We are going to adjourn to the conclusion of this meeting, so there was no reportable action at this time.
Thank you. This evening invocation will be delivered by Pastor Dr. Jesse Giddens from Destiny Christian Center, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. Please stand.
May we pray. Gracious and eternal Father, we come before you tonight, thanking you for another day, another opportunity to come, and Father, to hear and to decide and to make decisions concerning the issues and the agendas that govern our city. Father, we acknowledge you before we begin, because we recognize that you promised that if any would acknowledge you, that you would in turn direct our very paths. Father, you said we're to pray for those who are in authority in our city and our officials. And so, Father, we pray for our mayor, our city officials, and each that are represented here. You said that when we pray, God, you said that you would cause us to live peaceable and godly lives here in our city and on the earth. And so, Father, what we ask is, as we pray for first responders, we pray for our police, our law enforcement, we pray for those who work so hard to keep our city safe. We pray for safety for them, for their families. We pray for protection about our city. We pray that you would give us understanding and wisdom to help our city be a safer, better place to live, a place that is economically strong and developing and, and business prospering and everything around. Father, we thank you, even as this meeting begins. Thank you for the decisions that have to be made, for those that are on the agenda tonight, and for everyone that would take place. We ask these as you instructed us to pray, in the precious name of your Son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. So, Madam Clerk, will you please present the agenda to council and any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are no revisions to tonight's agenda, Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We also do not have any appeal hearings this evening, therefore, we will move on to public hearings. The first item that we have is item B1, public hearing to hear arguments for and against amending portions of Titles 10, Water Sewers and Utilities, and 16 Development Code of the Victorville Municipal. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards from anyone in the audience that would like to speak. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And I will ask the city clerk to read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the City Council first make the environmental exemption finding, and then introduce an ordinance number 2363, which is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, Amending Portions of Titles 10, Water Sewers and Utilities, and 16 Development Code of the Victorville Municipal Code, to Update, Streamline, Reinforce, Clarify, and Consolidate the City's Code Provisions Relating to the Use, Construction, Permitting, and Regulation of the Sanitary Sewer System, Including Addition of a Comprehensive Fat, Soils, and Grease Program, and Adopting by Reference Certain Portions of Victorville Water District Ordinance Number VWD 010, Chapter 10.08 of the Victorville Municipal Code, Relating to Discharge of Industrial Wastewater."
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any comments or questions?
I have a question, Madam Mayor, to the staff. Our current monthly sewer charge is $26.89. We're authorized to, because of past actions, $27.43. Is there anything in this ordinance that changes the rates?
No.
Thank you. It's all in.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question. Also for staff, does the City of Victorville have a FOGS program in place?
The City of Victorville does have a FOGS program in place, and in fact, I think it's important to note that in this particular item, there's nothing really new that the city already isn't doing. In fact, really, this is codifying a lot of things that's already being done, such as the FOGS program. In fact, through our sewer program, we do fund code enforcement to actively go out and inspect to make sure there's compliance. We also market and create awareness to members in the community to create better awareness of the problem of just disposing of FOGs into your residential and/or commercial pipes.
Just for the public's benefit, Keith, could you explain the acronym FOG?
FOGS is fats, oils, and greases. So, for those that haven't heard that, and probably many have done it, you take your rendered bacon fat, for example, and sadly, instead of putting it in a coffee can or peanut butter jar, you put it down the drain. And that's a major problem, because as it solidifies into a much smaller pipe, it actually creates major problems in the sewer system to where clogs are created, and you actually have sanitary sewer overflows. And when we have that, then you literally get raw sewage spilling into the street, and that's a major health and safety hazard and a threat to water quality. So, this item is largely dealing with trying to help enhance our overall sewer system management program. So, this item effectively helps codify certain things to help put stronger teeth into enforcement of some of our sewer regulations.
Thank you. Anyone else? May we have a motion here?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent calendar. And items C1 through C5 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Consent calendar.
I'd like to pull out C5 for discussion.
Second, with the understanding that C5 is pulled for a separate discussion.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
C5?
For C5, I have a question. Can you tell me a little bit more about this BNSF bridge project? How is this helping the City of Victorville and its residents? How much does this cost?
The total project cost, we could probably get answered by our city engineer, Brian Gangler, so I'll call him up. But this is an item very generally that we've discussed at length in closed session and even in public session, and it effectively widens the bridge at Bear Valley Road over the BNSF railroad. This item particularly is creating an appropriation to both the expense line and the revenue line for grant funds that were awarded. But basically, the project is going to add a lane on the north side of the bridge, oh, correct me when I'm wrong, from Ridgecrest, extending Ridgecrest westerly to Industrial, and also along the south side, and there's probably some other nice amenities like bike lane and things like that. So, I'll kind of turn it over to Brian for, for better detail.
One of your questions was the overall cost of the project, and right now, the overall cost is approximately $7 million. That includes design, construction, and right-of-way. And as far as the scope of the project, it's pretty much what Keith described. We're also going to add a double. We'll have a additional turn lane from Bear Valley Road to Ridgecrest, so there will be two left turn lanes. And there will be, the bridge will be widened, the road approaches will be widened, so we'll have standard, standard lane widths. We'll have shoulders on the bridge itself, so that someday, if there's a way for a bike path or a bike lane to cross, the width is there on the bridge. And I don't know if you have any other questions about the project in particular?
No, that was all. Thank you.
Brian?
Brian?
Okay. Basically, when the public hears a number like $7 million, of course, we were elected by the public to represent them, and that's why we have closed session hearings, and that's why we have the time not at meetings to work with staff to get these questions answered. But of that $7 million, can you explain how much of that is grant money, basically?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, most of this project is funded by a federal grant. It's a HBP Highway Bridge Program Grant, and it's, the reimbursement on that is over 88 percent. Now, it may be, it may be that there will be what they call some non-participating items, but we'll have to dip into our own pocket and pay for that. And one example is, we think that the right turn lane we're adding, I didn't mention that we're going to be adding a right turn lane going west. It's on Bear Valley going to Ridgecrest. That probably will be non-participating, but most, almost all the project will be funded 88 percent from that grant.
Rest of it comes from Measure I?
And, and the match will be Measure I. Right.
Which is a sales tax by the citizens of the county for a number of years.
That's right.
A number of times. Are we going to have another right turn lane from Ridgecrest onto Bear Valley?
I'm hesitating on that, because I'm trying to remember if there was going to be a double right, and I think, I think there is going to be a double right, an additional right?
Or two now? Two is what?
Well, there's a, there's a double left now from Ridgecrest, I'm sorry, from Industrial to Bear Valley.
Right. I'm talking about Ridge, because Ridgecrest is going to be a, a port and street for, once they open the Oklahoma Bridge, you're going to dump all that traffic onto the back of Spring Valley Lake, and it's to come around on Ridgecrest, because there's no place else to go, and it'll come back to Bear Valley Road. Follow me?
Yes.
So, I would think that with that additional traffic on Ridgecrest, they're going to want two right turn lanes onto Bear Valley.
Yeah, and to be honest, I don't remember how we're going to stripe it, but we're not, we're not substantially widening Ridgecrest Road itself. So, it's going to stay about the same width it is right now.
I believe that right turn's already a double right, and I think when that new traffic comes through, then there'll be signal coordination that has to be done to try to make the flow, flow as, as well as possible through there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to second the motion.
Oh.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I didn't.
Oh, I thought Mr. Cox did.
Oh, Mr. Cox.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to our written communications. And item D1, request to approve a construction agreement with Pacific Technical Resources. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve a construction agreement between the city and Pacific Technical Resources for the installation of the power quality meter at the Southern California Logistics Airport Substation Pole.
Any questions, or do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D2, award of contract to All American Asphalt. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors award a contract to All American Asphalt in the amount of $236,586.50 for the WID-1 paving project BM 17-065.
Questions? Motion?
What is the funding source for this?
Funding source for this would be water funds out of the WID-1 or the former Victor Valley Water District.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D3, presentation of request to approve the award for the purchase and delivery of a dry well sewage pump and motor. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve the award to Downing Construction, Inc., for the purchase and delivery of a dry well sewage pump and motor in the amount of $50,487 as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2016-2017 Capital Improvement Project Budget.
Questions?
I have a question. Before the 2016-2017 Capital Improvement Program, did we have something of such nature appear to have a backup for the water pump and the sewer?
I'm not aware. I'd have to go back and research specifically. I'm not aware that we did. This item is largely driven by the SSMP that was done, that, done late last year, and I'm trying to recall the date. I thought it was July or August, so that would actually been subsequent to the budgeting process. So, I could get back to you on a specific answer or a more precise answer as to whether or not this was in previous years. However, this is in direct response to recommendations coming out of the SSMP.
And it's also budgeted already?
That is correct.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D4, Mayor Protem Cox, appointments to Community Services Advisory Committee and Legislative Review Committee, reaffirmation of appointment to Planning Commission.
I would request that the council appoint the individuals that have been nominated.
Are they here?
Ask them to be, but they may be. Cox, you are appointing Larry Huber to the Planning Commission. What are his qualifications?
(Laughter).
How long do you have?
(Laughter).
Well, I mean, it's an issue. I would just like to... Well, I, I, I'll tell you, I think it's important to note that I indicated that it's important that people who are vested in the community have been involved in the community, have been involved in committees, own a business, or have exhibited involvement in the community from various points of view. And I requested that post, I received applications, a lot of interested individuals, very good, and went through and assigned a point system. And after each one, when I finished the appointment system, these are the individuals that came out highly recommended, very, very close. Mr. Huber's been a businessman in this committee, committee for some, that was him, he's been involved in the Christmas parade, co-edians, Elks, and several committees that have put on activities on behalf of the city. And Mr. Vince Onkin has been very much involved in the community. He's been on, so when I, when I finished, they are the ones that came out on top, and so I was very happy to provide that nomination to the City Council, trust that council appoint the individuals.
I think we have someone here, I'm not sure if it was Gold or Onkin. He raised his hand in the back.
Generally always here.
Oh, okay. Could he introduce himself here in the front, if I can ask him a question or two?
I bet.
You can always make a motion that we interview all the applicants.
Oh, no, no, not all, just, I just wanted to get...
Excuse me, I think we need to continue with our, where we're at.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D5, and I do have a card. Councilmember Gomez, appointment to the Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Any action would be at the discretion of the City Council on this item.
Thank you. I do have one card. Sergio Reyes?
Hi, before anything, I would like to thank all of you, Madam Mayor, Madam, Mr. Mayor Protemp, Councilman Kennedy and Negretti, for your consideration, as well as Councilwoman Blanca Gomez for her recommendation. I would just shortly like to state certain qualifications which I would like and which I would hope that you would consider for this position. I do have understanding in real estate and city functions. I understand the police powers that the city holds that allow them for zoning, and also abilities in downzoning, inclusionary zoning, non-conforming use of property, and as well as variances in conditional permit uses. I would like to also point out that within my participation in the community, I have served and participated within local church groups down by Sixth Street in Old Town Victorville. Through those projects and efforts, I consider that I have seen multiple points of interest for the city, and I feel that I can participate. If you would allow me to participate within this commission, I could be a direct line to those communities and for your use, of course, and for, to advise in, in anything that you would need me to participate. My experience within business and finance is I am a student at the local community college, and through that, through my business and, and finance major, I understand the importance of financial stability and the balanced budget that the city currently has. And I would consider that that balanced budget is of high, of high priority, so I would prioritize any advice that I give the council to maintain that, that balanced budget. And as well as, one of the, one of the main points that I would like to emphasize is the cooperation, that not only I consider of utmost importance, but that I am more than willing to adhere to. I understand the importance of showing a united front and being able to come here and be able to show the people of the city that truly we can see points in the same way, and even if we don't, we can be friendly to each other, and I believe that I can work well with fellow commissioners of appointed. Last but not least, I understand that there's going to, commissioners are going to know more than... Last but not least, I understand that there's going to be, commissioners are going to know more than I do. And not only am I apt and willing to learn as much as I can, but I am prepared to take the steps necessary to become even more involved within my community and to continue in my efforts to aid the City Council in any way I can. I want to appreciate, I really appreciate your time. And if there is any questions or any point that I can elaborate or clarify, it would be my pleasure.
Thank you. I have another card, Raul Rodriguez.
Yes, I'd like, oop. I'd like to, on D5, I don't agree with the fact that this, I don't have his name on here, should be appointed to the commission because of Blanca Gomez's track record. She's promoting illegal immigration, promoting sanctuary cities. And because of this individual, I oppose sanctuary cities. And this person that's going to be appointed or suggested by Blanca Gomez, I'm asking you to decline. And do not appoint her, appoint him to this position because of her track record. She needs to probably be more aware of what's going on in the city and not appoint individuals who might think the same way she does. I understand that she is part of La Raza. And La Raza is a very racial-motivated organization. So I think it's important that you, Congress or councilmen and mayor, I think it's important that you decline this individual. I think you need to find somebody that's more, has more experience in whatever he's going to be appointed as. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person is Robin Hudson, or I believe it's Hudson. Is that your last name?
Robin, my last name is Vidston, the H is silent. I'm just echoing what Mr. Raul Rodriguez said. We do not believe that an appointment by Councilmember Blanca Gomez, this is the right choice. We feel like there is not enough evidence that he is competent for the job. And we are here to say we oppose this appointment and would ask the other members to decline. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards, are there any comments, fire?
Yes, there is. To rebut...
Do you request me to speak?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. I'm not, I don't, I'm not familiar with La Raza, so please, that's false news. The other thing is, as you can see, we need a community of leaders to come up and voice their concerns to influence what's happening here. And I did suggest Sergio Reyes, and he's very competent. He's attended many of our workshop meetings at Old Town Victorville. And so I would ask that my councilmembers consider Sergio. This would be the second appointment that would be a no. And of course, we don't want to put that as something against Blanca, because I know that we're working together, and unfortunately, sometimes, you know, politics gets in the way. But I did suggest Sergio as one of my appointments for today. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have some comments. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Sergio Reyes for running for office. It's a big step, and getting people involved is very difficult because most people may not be aware of what's going on in their community. But typically, when you do something like this, you need a lot of support from the community. You need a lot of relationship building and networking. And I would just like to say that, again, I commend Sergio for what you've done in the past, and I hope you continue on. And furthermore, I'd like to offer to meet with you to lay out a roadmap of what exactly would be ideal for, as you go through life, and as you pick up experience, what typically happens. Everyone, everyone has a different background when they come up here, and so... But again, if you're willing to meet and hear just somebody's objective opinion in a way to help build a relationship with you, I'm happy to do that, too. So if you don't mind, I'll send you an email or get ahold of you, and we can go from there.
Madam Mayor, I'd also encourage Mr. Reyes to continue his involvement. Good luck, keep running for office. However, I think the Planning Commission is a place where we need people who are knowledgeable, experienced, and invested in the community. It's a vitally important position. The council defers, in most cases, to Planning Commission judgment. So that experience is just critically important. And I just, I don't see it in a college student. I think there are so many people in this community eminently qualified to sit on that Planning Commission. I would like to see us have one of those folks nominated.
Well, okay. I find Sergio Reyes, I find your resume very interesting. You are a well-groomed and professional-looking young man. However, I don't think it would be fair to the Planning Commission, which I respect and appreciate very highly for the work they do. For me to approve your appointment to the Planning Commission, your resume indicates that you have a lot of book theory, but no experience. I know you will succeed, I know you will go a long ways. But at this time, I don't feel that you have the qualifications necessary. And when we are elected or appointed, it's because we bring something to the table, not because we expect to be trained on the job. And this is something that's very difficult that we're dealing with. And I would not do this to the Planning Commission. Thank you. One else?
I make a motion to appoint Sergio Reyes. With no second, it seems like the motion dies, right?
That's correct, if there is no second, the motion fails.
Madam Mayor, this motion has failed, I'd like to make it. I read Mr. Gomez's application very carefully. Really encourage him to stay involved, get involved. I'm bothered by the fact that every councilmember has spoken to Councilman Gomez regarding the appointments on how important this position is to the community, to the growth, to the development, the rules and regulations in development. The fact that the Planning Commission is a very powerful body. It certainly has administrative duties, normally administrative duties are reserved to city's administration under a city manager. It has quasi-legislative powers. And in fact, the legislative powers are reserved by the council. You can see how important that is. I, if I were... I'm afraid that we are embarrassing the candidates because we're not appointing those individuals that have, for their names have been submitted. But my greater concern is that Councilmember Gomez fully understands what it takes for this council to consider a positive vote. And I hope the rumor that she's submitting names that can't be appointed so she can claim the pushback are untrue. We want to make this appointment, we want to get it done. If Councilman Gomez, and I believe she does, really understands what it takes, she should be submitting names that meet all the qualifications that we are looking for. To not do that almost appears to be an overact on purpose. That's embarrassing the council, and it's really embarrassing to the individuals that come here and sit and listen and get turned down. I hope this doesn't continue, I pray that it doesn't continue. And I don't know how to cure it, I don't want to go through this again. I'm not sure that we're not going to keep going. This is not a pushback against the individual, has nothing to do with pushback or anything at all. It's not personal. But it's really important, and I think that Mr. Rodriguez has a, has so many good points that we will consider getting him involved in the community, appointing to some committee, I think he's a worthwhile candidate, can do a good job. I hope he will stay involved and not feel rejected by this. I hope Councilmember Gomez will submit a qualified individual as soon as possible so that this city can get on with the business at hand. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you.
I have a comment for that. I have taken very specific instruction from Mr. Cox that he's looking for someone that's qualified in the business sector or someone that's heavily involved in community service. So when I considered that, and I saw Sergio being very heavily involved in the community with meetings at all levels, not only Old Town, not only himself running as a candidate, my understanding was that he would be a perfect candidate. So if the, all four of you were suggest what the requirements are delineating for me, when I look for my fourth candidate, I will make sure once again, twice, three times, that those candidates have that. However, they are my appointees, so I'm asking for that.
I, you know, I, I, I'm sorry, but I need to respond to that. They're not individual, individuals don't have the right to make the appointment. It is a council appointment, the City Council must appoint. We can nominate, council can accept or reject, it is a council appointment. So I want to clarify, because I keep hearing that the councilmembers can't appoint, or a certain councilmember got their appointment, it's not an appointment, it's just a nomination.
Exactly, thank you very much. Okay, now we move on to public comments. Madam Clerk, please read the statement.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting.
Thank you. And now we will have our city managers' report.
Public comment, Mayor Garcia.
Public comment first.
Oh, yes, I do have. The first one is Rebecca Leon, and after her will be Gloria Gilmore.
Good evening. I'm here to address a safety concern. We're in need of a traffic light on Mojave Drive and Amethyst Road in Victorville. Last month alone, there were four lives lost. The most recent being two siblings, one, both under the age of 15, at that same crossing. There's been several other incidents over the past few years, some reported, some not. We do appreciate the attempts that the cities made thus far with adding a flashing stop sign and blocking off certain areas. However, it does nothing for the speed. The speed on Mojave Drive is 60 miles per hour, but I have seen and almost been hit myself by people going 70, sometimes 80 miles per hour. So this is just, it's a real safety concern here. I understand that you guys already made your plans with the budget for this year, but I do respectfully ask that maybe you can prioritize it in next fiscal year. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm here on the behalf and standing on Rebecca's words on the situation on the street light here in Victorville, California. Too many lives have been gone due to crazy driving. Well, maybe we need to change some laws on driving, giving kids their driving license so early in age. But that's besides the point, we need some street lights to define maybe some more lighted areas to save our children or family. I come from Apple Valley, I started a petition there in 2014 for streetlights in there. Also, we just had a death of a young lady on Kiowa. I'm petitioning again for Apple Valley. But I'm here to represent Rebecca and all the stems that Victorville, you know, and your budget. And I do respect you guys for your budget and everything that you've done to help us. So hopefully in the future, we can get these streetlights and save lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have something, Amethyst, Mojave, Amethyst?
Madam Mayor, if I might, just to help address the public that did attend, the city is looking at the intersection very seriously. We're very compassionate towards the issues that have transpired recently. And one of the things sadly that we can't do is just arbitrarily go up and put signals or even stop signs for that fact unless they meet certain warrants. But what I can tell the public is that there is an ongoing traffic investigation that's being conducted by the Sheriff's Department. There's also an independent traffic study currently being conducted and led by the city's engineering department, the city engineer and the traffic engineer, to in fact decide if warrants have been met. And certainly if the investigation and the warrants yield improvements required at that intersection and/or along the stretches of Amethyst or Mojave Drive, then the city will bring something back to the, or staff will bring something back to this council for consideration. So at this point in time, what we have done is just created some additional awareness. We've got some flashers, and we've put up an additional markings along Mojave to try to create some just greater awareness, especially not only at daytime, but certainly at nighttime as well. So what we've done is tried to just create an improved awareness, a heightened sensitivity for the driver that there's a stop sign, asking for additional caution. But once the studies are in fact complete, we will be bringing something back to the council for official consideration.
There a stop sign at Amethyst now?
There's a stop sign going northbound on Amethyst, yes. At Mojave Drive, I'm sorry.
On Mojave?
Yes.
Four-way stop?
That is a, no, it's a one-way, and the traffic on Mojave eastbound and westbound is through.
Not a stop?
Not a stop, it's, they're through lanes.
No stop on Mojave, and then Amethyst does not continue north of Mojave. It's a T-intersection there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Messler, as you can see, something is being done, it's been investigated. We will come to a conclusion at a later time. The next card that I have is Christina Brady, and after that is Dean DeLeon.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here in support of the signal, I actually am a Victorville resident, and I live right the next block over Bruce site. That's the next block over from Amethyst. And I can hear the traffic off of Mojave every night. Thank you for the attempt to fix the problem, but the actual problem is on Mojave, not Amethyst. Amethyst, it's wonderful and great that it has a stop sign, but hopefully it does something for Mojave, because that's the big problem is Mojave. Like I said, I hear it out my window, laying... Like I said, I hear it out my window, laying, laying at night. I hear the speed. I hear the racers go by. So that's, that's really the problem there, but we do appreciate you're taking the steps to make it a safer place and to monitor. We just hope that it sticks and that, you know, eventually, hopefully, hopefully something will be done to help and prevent the lives from being lost. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dean DeLeon? Or Deanne?
This is not about the stop sign. I'm here to vent my emotions about one of the city council members, Blanca Gomez. Blanca, I'm going to see it in Spanish, esta es muy mala.
Ma'am, can you adjust the mic so we can hear you?
Stand away from the mic.
That's better.
Okay. Blanca is muy mala, e, la niña. Okay, for the, what I was trying to say is that she is a very bad little girl. She tries to do something that most Americans are against. She is not supposed to represent people who are not legal American citizens. She's supposed to rep, represent American citizens in this city because that's why they were voted in. I am tired of her helping the illegal aliens in our community to take money, to take food out of my own grandchildren's mouths. My grandchildren are veteran, are their parent, her father is a veteran. They're veteran, veterans of Iraq, two tours, got PDS. There's no money to help him because the Veterans Administration keeps sending the little amount. My daughter is trying to go to college, raise four children, and we had to send my son-in-law back to Arizona where his aunt and uncle live. They are what you might call upper middle class, so they have a little more money. They had to put him in a hospital called Teen Challenge. He's been in there for three weeks. He'll be there for three, not for three years, for thirteen months. This is not right for an American citizen to have to go through all this, and the veterans are supposed to have the money and it's not given to them. I'm on yellow, that means hurry up, okay? I have a daughter who's a teacher. She struggled through, got all her credentials and everything, promised that her loans would be taken care of through grant, not through grants, but through, I think it was called Apple. If she taught in a low socioeconomic area, she's teaching in a low socioeconomic area near Victorville, and now they said there is no money. That's it, no money. It's gone to other places. I don't want to thank you at all for this kind of action that you have given to my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Raul Rodriguez?
Yes, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment rights. You know, we live in a wonderful country where we can voice our opinion. And I'm sure that you all know Jay Obernolte. He has a bill that he introduced in the Assembly and it's Assembly Bill Number Two, and it's protect law enforcement. It's a, it's a hate crime to go after police officers, so the penalty is going to be worse for those criminals that go after police officers. So part of our group met with Jay Obernolte. We asked him to introduce this bill because Louisiana had done the same thing. It's a law there, so we want the same law here in California so we can continue protecting law enforcement. I have a son that's a police officer, and that's not the reason why I did it. I did it because I was sick and tired of having all these law enforcement, men, women, being murdered by Black Lives Matter and whoever was doing it. I think it's, I think it's wrong to go after police officers. They're there to protect us. And I'd like to present this to you, Mayor, so you can give this to the Chief of Police. It's a packet of information. And also the other, the other issue I would like to discuss is the fact that I'm a proud American. I was born in this country, and I think it's important that we as Americans start holding their feet to the fire. And I'm talking about those politicians who do not want to represent American citizens. They rather represent illegals. They want sanctuary cities, and it's important that we say no to sanctuary cities. They need to be, they need to be in this country legally. In 1846 through 1849, there was a war between America and Mexico. The United States won the war. They went all the way to Mexico and they paid, they paid $15 million for California. They bought that from Mexico. So this California belongs to the United States of America and not to Mexico anymore. That's what the La Raza keeps saying, that it's still their land. It isn't their land. It belongs to us, the American citizens of California. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason Knight?
Honorable Mayor, council members, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to stand before you and give testimony. First, I'd like to say, and I don't want to beat a dead horse considering everybody with their sanctuary cities issue, but for those of you who don't know me, my name's Jason Knight, and I and my wife, we run a, or co-found an organization known as Helping Hands of the High Desert. We've been doing that since October of last year. But during, on the 25th actually of February 2017, at Swapping Mamas grand opening out in Adelanto, one of my volunteers of Helping Hands, who was there to help with a setup of a booth, was disrespected pretty much by one of your sitting council members, as a matter of fact, namely Blanca Gomez. And that being said, these individuals are volunteers. They're here helping out of their own free will and accord in order to help out the city and make the city a better place. So my question to you guys is what recourse is there for council members who go around the city disrespecting citizens? That's all I have.
We appreciate your information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
That was the last card that I had. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Can come up and speak.
You have to cut it.
You can't stand, you can't do that.
You have to stand over here, ma'am.
Come to the podium, please.
I said, I don't know what's going on, but I know Blanca, and she's nothing what anybody comes up here and says at all. And it's a shame to hear it. If people are up here to give their own opinions, then fine, but to turn around and blame her for everybody else's opinion, that's another story. I mean, we don't go blame everybody for what happens in Victorville, which is, which I would like to blame everybody, but I can't because I know I got people up here that are supposed to take care of that. But I don't go blame anybody else, and it's really sad to see citizens of Victorville doing that. Over there piling up on one person, that's really sad. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you. I believe this is my last card. Robin?
Yes, I would just like to briefly say what happened in the sanctuary city of Los Angeles last week. A young mother was killed by a man illegally in our country with a record of crime. He had one hit-and-run under his belt. He was just fleeing from a car accident he had just caused, and he killed this beautiful young woman. Her family is devastated, her father, her parents, they were on the news today. So this is the example of what happens in a sanctuary city, a city where criminal aliens are free to hide. And I would just like to remind the public that when we attended a Rialto City Council, or not City Council, a Rialto meeting at the City Hall for sanctuary cities, Blanca Gomez showed up wearing her Victorville city pin. And we were astounded and also we did not respect the fact that she pretended like she didn't know what a sanctuary city was. Sort of similar tonight when Mr. Rodriguez used the word La Raza, she says she doesn't know what La Raza means. So we would like to thank this body politic for not being a sanctuary city in Victorville. That helps to keep this city safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not have any other cards, so we will move on to our city manager's report.
Steph has no additional comments tonight. Madam Mayor?
Council members?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make some comments. Thank you. I really appreciate everyone coming out here tonight and expressing their concerns to us. While we can't address every issue and go into it, and a lot of times we cannot go back and forth with the public, you have your time to address us and then we have time at the end to give our comments. And so what I'd like to do, just for the public's benefit, is to understand the narrative of stories that you hear or read or things that happen in the city. We have doubled in population since 2000. Our services have not kept up with that, and you will see that. Police, fire, landscape maintenance districts, water, power, public safety, fire department, police. And unfortunately, Mojave Road is a perfect example. It's a perfect metaphor for where we are as a city. One side of Mojave is developed, and there, there are responsibilities for folks that put things there. They have a fair share agreements on intersection. You got four corners, right? So typically, four folks will be contributing funds or, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. And it does get frustrating as a council member because we care. We, we live in the community. And, you know, it's really hard for me to go down Mojave Road and see all the, the little monuments that people have put to people that have passed away. When I hear about the stories, I'm, you know, always can, just trying to think, how did that happen? But what we can, you know, it, it doesn't, it's not going to make anybody feel better, but as a city, we are half-built out. Half of Mojave Road is built, the other half isn't. And when it is, you'll see things that belong there ideally, and if there isn't anything, or if something is missing, we can certainly address that. But that goes the same with parts of the city that don't have sewers, sidewalks, lighting. Now, we can certainly do that, but there's a cost. And so if you happen to live in a place where there is no drainage and it rains and bad things happen, again, we can look at it, but it was designed that way. And so the taxes, property taxes as an example, I mean, I gotta tell you, I pay a lot in taxes and assessments, but I do not have those problems, and I wish we could fix those issues on other parts of the city that weren't done as what you might expect, streetlights, sidewalks, and storm drain, stormwater runoff. All that to say, we can do a lot, but a lot of it, well, a lot of funding is the main issue and timing. And so I just wanted to say that when it comes to narratives of the stories that we're hearing, we are a half-built-out city and we will continue to grow, and it's just the whole thing with the whole desert, much like narrative of the Planning Commission appointment. This is the third appointment that I have been embarrassed as a council member, embarrassed to have to look at folks that are probably, have their hearts in the right place, but we cannot appoint these folks. So that is the story. It's not that we are ganging up on anybody. There's a process here, and when your process here says you need someone that's been involved with the community for, for some time, we're thinking 10, 15 years, I'm pretty sure that was clear, someone with experience, preferably in business, doing business in the city, knowing what it takes to get a business permit, that's what we're looking for. But instead, the narrative is we're, we're rejecting these appointments. We're not rejecting them. We're looking for an appropriate person. And so the narrative that you're hearing, there's more to it a lot of times, and sometimes it's frustrating, sitting here, because we don't have enough time to go into all of it.
One of these things I just can't quite pass up. I saw, I don't think I missed my calling. I don't think I would have been a particularly good American history teacher, but it's probably my second love after the work I do for a living. And I was a little stunned by Mr. Rodriguez's comment about the war with Mexico. A lot of people think that the biggest land grab we did in this country was when we acquired the Louisiana Purchase from France in 1803. That's not, that wasn't the biggest. The biggest occurred in James K. Polk's administration between 1844 and 1848, where we acquired basically all of the western half of the United States, pretty much everything between the Pacific Ocean and northwest to southwest and probably all the way over to Colorado. Those were acquired otherwise. I don't know of any American historian who's particularly proud of the war we fought with Mexico. It was, it was not a war to be particularly proud of. And we took California and South, and New Mexico and Arizona and that entire southwest. That was part of the agreement that ended that war. What we did was we paid $15 million in damages, one-five, not five-zero, one-five, in damages to Mexico for the, for the damage we did in, in their country and particularly in Mexico City. It's not something any of us ought to be real proud of, and I can tell you, we didn't buy Mexico, we didn't buy California from Mexico, and anybody who's looked seriously at our history would understand. I share everybody's concern about the appointments we're getting from, from Councilmember Gomez. We want to fill this seat. We want a qualified person. And Mr. Reyes, I encourage you to stay with it, keep at it. You don't have to do what I did. I was 55 before I ever got involved in elected office. That is not necessary, but you do get to bring a wealth of experience, I suppose. But anyway, stay at it.
Who won the French-Indian War? No.
Who wants to continue?
Recently, an item came to me asking an opinion on councilman being reimbursed for expenditures. I, I wasn't familiar with the policy because I don't turn any expense.
For what?
Expense accounts for councilmembers. I don't turn any expense account. I don't believe the mayor has turned any expense account. I don't believe, but, but there's a need to have a policy that's up to date, and I finally got a copy of the policy because this policy was adopted apparently in November the 2nd, 1993. So I would request that the city manager get that policy out, submit it to the city council, have each council member provide an input, forward it back to our city manager, and agendize this so we can update this long-worn out- and agendize this, so we can update this long-worn-out policy, because you're going to be shortly faced with this issue anyway. You might as well update it, get it current, have councilman, this council, not a councilman from 1993, not a council, not, didn't councilman, not a council from 1993, update it, fair, equitable to all concerned. I still don't intend to turn any council, any expense accounts, but this is so outdated, it needs to be updated, and it is an issue that's going to be coming up. Please address it, councilmembers. That's all I have.
Okay, so, I have some time to speak. Yep, there is definitely no push from anybody here. We've all created our own way of thinking, of course. I'm one of the newest and the very youngest right now at the council, and as you may see, seventy, eighty, and another seventy, and another probably forty-three or so. I'm still under my forties. My thoughts and my ideas have always been very contrary to my colleagues. I thought diversification with my colleagues would play in well. One person's doing this, the other person in lobbies, the other person has this, church followers, you know, background with whatever it is they have. I thought that would have been great if we were a perfect team, right? That get along and do all these things. But of course, we're not. My communication with them is null zero. My communication happens with staff, 100%. It's very difficult to speak with my colleagues, not only because of the brown knock, but also because of the attitudes. Sometimes, a particular mayor does not shake my hand, and she will do it in front of you, and this is very obvious, she's done it in front of the camera. And I'm not making, right now, anything better, but neither have they, right? So, it's, in two years from now, November 2018, we have another election. So, Mr. Knight is using that as a political tool to come up here and say, Blanca this, Blanca that, yes, Mr. Knight is back there. That's what he had. He's running for council, and so, he's using his strategy to make sure that he attacks me, right, in whatever sense he can. He already has in his pocket my councilmembers here, with the mayor included. We have over there people creating narratives about sanctuary cities, that I'm for it. Never have I said I was for sanctuary cities. Today, I say, I don't even understand what the word sanctuary meant, and I don't know why Mr. Rodriguez keeps bringing people. He doesn't even live in Victorville. He lives in Apple Valley. He brings people from other areas, and when he can, one or two, three or four people he can bring from Victorville. So, I don't know why you keep saying things about sanctuary cities. We're not discussing it. It's not going to be brought here. Clearly, none of these colleagues would ever be for that, and never did I said I was for that either. And I'm not taking a stance right here, right now either. Another thing that I'd like to mention is, yes, I was in Adelanto, and I was able to take a certificate, Swapping Mamas, I took it, and I was pressed for time, and I showed up, and someone asked me, would you take a picture with Helping Hands? And I said, I'm pressed for time, I need to say goodbye to Lisa and Joshua. And so, that's what I said. So, there's going to be an ordinance that was here for years. I say years, because since I presented two certificates, the mayor has said, we will not be doing this anymore. We have to write an ordinance. And so, I got feedback from the staff that said, for years, we have been doing this. And I said, really? Because I was embarrassed when I went to Victor Valley Community College, representing the city, and did not get a certificate to show in front of many of my colleagues, because I do work at BBC. That was an embarrassing moment. I took some certificates, now I can no longer take any. I know if the mayor is busy, she won't be able to go, and if I have the time, I was more than willing to. So, when you see that new ordinance, it's not because it just magically appeared every so many years, it's because I'm doing something to try to create my change and bring in whatever value I have, I'm trying to bring in. Okay? And it's not very well-accepted. And if you just heard Mayor, Councilman Cox talking about reimbursements, guess who's asking for reimbursement? Blanca, because she rode six hours to Sacramento to that new mayors and councilmembers. And yeah, I'm going to seek that. I'm going to say, can you please reimburse me? I drove, I purchased, I didn't drive my own vehicle, I'm going to go ahead, and I purchased food. No, I didn't go eat at Red Lobster. No, I ate at Del Taco, I had, you know, this is who I am. So, that's why you're going to see this 1993 ordinance being returned to whatever is new. So, yes, the narrative is being created, guys. It is. And since I talked so much, it's also been said that my time would be cut. And I said, welcome it. You know why? Because you cut our times. Okay? So maybe we need to speak up and say, what is happening? And there's a lot happening. So now, I'm going to say, thank you so much for whoever created the Citizens' Guide to Councilmembers Meeting. This is something very important. You know how our meetings run, so thank you for whoever put it out there. I appreciate that, and I would, if I can make a request, we can have this in different languages to facilitate, or at least have it in print somewhere, so when someone comes here, and we know that they don't speak the language, I can say, here, this is what's going. And I am all over the city, you will see me in not only my city, different cities, you will also see me in different meetings, all around, everywhere. If you have an event, please invite me, I will be right there to support you, anywhere you go. I was today, actually, with, in Loving Goods, a meeting, they had a supervisors' meeting, and I offered and said, let's make an appointment, let's sit down and talk about partnerships, because I want to see my community grow. And I'm going to be in it by myself for many years, but I'm already, I've invited the community on several occasions on different levels to come and support me. And some of you are here because of that. You want to see a change, and this change cannot happen with one person. It has to be at least a majority vote. My first four years, like I've told you, it's to build a network of community sense, and to engage each other, to get closer with what insights I can help provide you, and back and forth. And I have a lot more to say, but you know what? I'm not, I'm going to be a little bit more respectful of my colleagues' time. They've said enough, and I think I've said enough too.
We still have to continue our closed-session meeting, so we're not done. Well, she shows a lot of respect for us, and I'm sorry to say this, I don't like to bring it before the public. We went to closed session this evening, before we came into our regular session. She's, it's an own fact, whoever's conducting the meeting, or the mayor sits at the head of the table, right? She sat at my seat, and she refused to give it up. That's how she respects our council. That's all I have to say.
We adjourn to executive session.
Needing to adjourn.
With respect to all of the closed-session items considered by the city council tonight, there is no reportable action.